We're gonna go ahead and get started. All set? All right, well, thank you, everyone, for coming here in person today. I appreciate it. I'm sure the candidates do. Just a couple of ground rules. I'm gonna direct candidates to both questions. We had a coin flip to decide who would start. And then I'm gonna respond. I'm gonna alternate the responses as we work through the questions. I have about a dozen questions that we're gonna go through. I think it'll take about an hour, and hopefully, I think that'll run through everyone's attention. We've also agreed that the answers to that reason will be limited to about three minutes each, so that we can keep things flowing. But I usually don't find that that's much of a problem. So let's get started. I think, yeah, you were gonna answer first.
Right.
Maybe you could start by telling us a little bit about yourself and why you're running for town council.
So I see a lot of familiar faces, so I'm sorry if I'm repeating myself, but my background in my career life was working in banking and finance as a relationship manager, handling large loan relationships with multiple banks, lawyers, clients. So I'm not gonna detail all of that. And in the personal life part as well, I was a volunteer for a number of things, including working as a court-appointed special advocate in Essex County, New Jersey, maybe in my 30s. Then, when we moved to Atlanta, I was appointed to the Board of Trustees of St. Martin's Episcopal School for six years on the Investment and Finance Committee. And I helped the person who was kinda like the CFO of the school renegotiate the school's loan documents and a bond offering to finance a big addition to the school to create a bigger middle school for the school. So those are some of the things that I've done in the community here. We've been here full, Jim and I've been here full-time almost seven years now. We've been property owners since 2003. And in full-time retirement, I've been involved in a lot of different things in the community. And wanted to do that because, for me, golf is not enough, pickleball's not enough. I don't play tennis. And I wanted to feel like this is really my home. And for me, to make it feel really like home, I have to be involved in the community. I wanna meet and get to know as many people as possible. One of my friends who's here today said my special power is my friendliness, or superpower is what I call it. So that's why I'm running. I've been involved in a lot of different things here on Kiowa. The town council opening, as you know, came about because we had a resignation. I wasn't looking at the moment to run for town council. But when this opening came about pretty quickly with a short time frame, I thought about it myself. I had friends ask me if I would be willing to run. Jim, my husband, said, "Are you sure you wanna do this?" A couple of other people said, "What, are you crazy?" But I do like being involved, and Kiowa is my home. It's the last address I plan on having. So I want to help myself feel like it's home. I want to solicit information, opinions. I'll listen to everybody and be an active contributor to the town council's deliberations. I understand how it works, what the authorities and responsibilities are for the town council. I think I'm pretty much up to speed with that, and I think we've really got a great group of people in the council and the mayor. And I'm anxious to join that exclusive club of people. So that's kind of who I am and why I'm running, and I would welcome all of you to call me, to email me, to stop me before I leave today. I'm happy to answer any question you've got. In addition to the questions that Lance and I both have already answered from Preserve Kiowa that I thought were really well-crafted questions and good topics for the two of us to cover. So please don't hesitate to ask me anything you want to ask me. And my phone number, I'll give it to you. Just approach me. I'll give you my cellphone number.
Thanks, Lance.
Thank you, Kevin. I appreciate you and Kika and Shannon pulling this together so Gay and I could talk to the the community some and share our thoughts and perspectives. My life has been a life of service, probably in my DNA genetically. It probably started, though, probably in second grade when I joined Cub Scouts. I eventually became an Eagle Scout, earned my God and Country Award, which is not as well-known, but it's hard to get. I joined the military. I went to college on an Air Force scholarship, so I served my nation. And while I was serving my nation, I served my communities across the country and overseas in our various postings. You know, the interesting thing about the military community, they're not employees. They're, you become family. You become very close. You're responsible for the family. My wife, Missy, was a key spouse when I commanded in Germany. And a good example is when a large part of my unit deployed for the Iraqi war, they left their families behind. And those families didn't have the normal support network that they'd have if they were in the United States. So led by Missy, with me being there too, we worked with those families and made sure that they had everything they need so that the forward-looking military member could focus on their job, knowing we have them. I've been involved in communities, as I said, over the years. Most recently, in Alexandria, Virginia, was our home. And Alexandria, I think, is very representative of where Kiowa is going. Not maybe to that scale, but Kiowa is facing the end of the development cycle, more full-time residents, the complications that come with that, with densification, traffic, stormwater and harsh management, all those things, very similar things that cities like Alexandria also deal with. We dealt with development issues. We dealt with green space issues. I was very involved. I was a member of our community association board. Missy was the president later down the road. And I worked closely with city council on one issue in particular, which is traffic. I did deep research on the traffic issues going on in Alexandria, and were plaguing our community in particular, and proposed a traffic task force, which they enacted, and I was a member of. Here at Kiowa, you know, my life and career, the roles I've had, I've had to change jobs every two or three years, both in my military career and my corporate career with AT&amp;T. And you don't get a warm-up lap. You hit the ground running. When you take the flag as a commander, you're in charge. You're accountable. You gotta be ready. So I've developed the skills to do that and become very ready. When we first started coming to Kiowa, Missy and I both started attending town meetings. We go to most of the council meetings, Planning Commission, BZA, then to the Arts Council meetings, and Environmental Committee. We've done our homework and have gotten smart. We've also gotten very engaged with the community, not just in it alone, but the broader Kiowa. Made so many friends across Kiowa, and especially during the campaign, have been out, you know, meeting that broader Kiowa community and getting the perspective. So why am I running? Well, first of all, I had to get permission because you don't run by yourself. But I finished my second career this spring. Timing was good. I'm up on the issues. I'm up on the topics. I've really enjoyed becoming part of the community, and I'm ready to go.
Great. So, follow-up on that. What is your understanding of the effort required to be a member of the council, and are you committed to completing the full term?
Absolutely. I finish everything I start, and I've had to. And I've had to get results. I've received numerous military awards and corporate awards for the accomplishments. And when you, when you learn a business unit, I ran the profit and loss for a major business unit for AT&amp;T. Hundreds of millions of dollars, hundreds of people, and I was held before results. And so this is a full-time job. I think for the mayor, it's probably a 60-hour week job because he's always there. But to be up on the issues and be fully engaged with the community and represent the community that is required for this job, it's a commitment, and it's a long-term commitment. It's a three-year term to finish this unexpired term. And I've got the skills in complex problem-solving and critical and independent thinking that I've had to develop in my military and corporate careers, the rise in the ranks that I did in both of those. I've met with all the council members and the mayor. I've met with all the KICA board because we have adjacent authorities and governance to make sure the chemistry was right. And I feel like it is. I feel like I got that same response back that, you know, that I could work with them and they could work with me. So it's a demanding job, but the community deserves that.
Okay.
It is almost a full-time job, from everything I've observed, going to town council meetings and some of the committee meetings around the town, also KICA board meetings. And I'm happy to sacrifice personal life things to do the work on the town council. I like doing this kind of stuff. This is what makes me happy and energized, being involved in the community and showing up for the meetings. There's a lot going on. It seems like there's so many more meetings now than there were six years ago when Jim and I retired here from Atlanta. But that's a good thing. There's a lot more community engagement. And I would encourage all of you to think about raising your hand and running for KICA board or town council or one of the committees or boards or commissions. We need good people. Unfortunately, it seems like the last couple of years, we have not had a healthy number of people raise their hands to put themselves out there. But I am happy to do the work. This is the kind of stuff I like. And I'll make the time to do it, and I promise you I'll solicit opinions, expert advice. I'll listen to all of it. I'll lean on people that I know may know more about things than I do to help me make the right decision for everybody. And I look forward to three years. Three years goes by fast. I'm not worried about the three years part of it, and I will not step down. It won't be, it wouldn't be my decision to step down. And I think we've had too much turnover in some of the key positions in town, including town council and KICA board. And I'd like to see us get to the point where we don't have to deal with that anymore. So yes, I'm here, ready to make the commitment. I've been committed, and I'll stay the course.
Great. So to you again, what do you believe will be the most important issues that the town will need to address during your term?
The town's authorities are mainly involving development and development-related issues from my perspective. Upcoming, as all of you know, hopefully, I was hoping the mediation results would be officially announced by today, but they're not quite ready. I guess the judge hasn't issued his approval of the mediation outcome. But we've heard about it. All of us have heard about it. Regarding the lawsuits, the Cape, the HOAs along Beach Walker, where Lance and Brad Belt live. So upcoming is the Beach Walker parcels closer to this building that will be developed by the partner. They're currently separate parcels with separate zonings. I've heard, or it's my understanding, that the developer is going to be looking at a rezoning to a planned development type of zoning for these five parcels, which they intend to build condominiums on. That creates a lot of questions about traffic, stormwater runoff, pervious versus impervious surfaces. The Planning Commission working hard on that and making recommendations to the town council is going to be very important, not just to the people that live in the West Beach area, but to all of us. The second thing that seems to be the most important to me is the upcoming rework of the existing development agreement with the resort. In my mind, I live in the middle of the island, so they own the East Beach Market property where they demolished all the buildings. That's a very valuable piece of property, and it will be subject to the new development agreement when that occurs. More density. I think they're looking at possible residential development of that parcel, condominium, more condominiums. And given the traffic that you see every day now, it makes you wonder, how are we going to be able to handle all of that traffic? So to me, those two upcoming future developments are the most impactful things that will be facing our community. And I hope that we have a lot of input from the community, a lot of expert information, maybe hired subcontractors, consultants, whatever, to come in and tell us what to expect and now to mitigate for the traffic and stormwater runoff and possible evacuation questions, given the traffic and development on the front of the island in the West Beach area.
Great. Thanks, Lance.
Yeah, thanks, Kevin. So, you know, like I touched on in my opening comments, it really all was tied to densification, increased population, increased development density and traffic and the other things that come with that, which are the issues I mentioned that I was involved in in Alexandria because Kiowa is dealing with larger community issues now. The ordinances are one thing that I think about. They're tied, like you're dealing with the covenants. Ordinances were written in a different era for a different community. And so I think it's important that we review our ordinances and make sure they meet the needs of the community today and going forward. I'm not saying take on some massive rewrite effort, but there are, there are probably some updates that could be done and some gaps that could be addressed to make the community better. So much of this ties to infrastructure, and that's what I've done throughout my whole career, is infrastructure. I've managed large budgets in the Pentagon. I've managed and been accountable for budgets for a business unit at the base level. And seeing what the priority and needs for the community are gonna be for the next few years, that's really the job of council and to address those going forward and make those investments and get the staff and the community driving in the right direction so that we have the community that we want 10 years from now. I'm an example of somebody who realized during COVID that you can live here. My wife still works full-time, and she's allowed to work remotely. And we're seeing in the broader community, a lot more people. I think we could see double our population in 10 years. So how do we keep Kiowa the way we want it to be? And so embrace what we brought ourselves here for as well. You know, I think about public safety. You know, there's some things going on in town right now with the police feasibility study. None of that can be done without partnership with KICA, by the way, and the resort, because there's different authorities. Do we need a police force? Let's see what the data says. I'm not sold on it, but, you know, we'll see what that is. But I do think about public safety and emergency management and disaster response, which in the military, we all have more than one job, and one of them is disaster response and recovery, because bases come under attack potentially, and you need to be prepared for scenarios like that. When I was with AT&amp;T, when Hurricane Michael hit the Panhandle of Florida, the Air Force Chief Information Officer called me the morning afterwards and said, "Tidyl's down hard. Can you get it up, Lance?" And within just a few hours, I had cell coverage back up at Tidyl. We rolled in mobile cell trucks to get the the base back up and operating. And when I think about public safety, both quality of life and public safety, cellular coverage is not good. I've built a few cell towers. I know how those decisions are made, so I can help the island in those discussions because I know what ticks inside the company's heads to make those decisions and make those investments. I've had to sell within the company. I know how to sell to the company. So those are just some examples.
Great. So, back to you, Lance. Can you share your views on the comprehensive plan? How will this plan benefit KICA members, and what do you think are the most favorable elements of that?
Well, like I said, we're in the phase right now where we're planning for increased density and increased population and traffic. I think that we should be addressing not only what goes on on Kiowa, but maybe not directly in the plan, but we need to be acknowledging what's happening outside the community as well that does involve this community. You know, development, I mean, we're gonna have a decision on the ballot about the 526 extension. You know, do we want to pay more tax, and do we really want it? But I think about things like the Orange Hill development. It's gonna provide a great amenity for the club members, and I'm all for that. I heard tea times are hard to get some job like this, so, you know, that's a, that's a good thing. That's a plus. But what's that gonna do? That and other development outside the gate is gonna increase gate traffic. So that's something KICA's gonna figure out that the town's got a role with that. So how do we tangle that together, comprehensive, you know, in a plan? I think it's important we consider all that because everybody's already frustrated gate traffic. Thankfully, the town has traffic management outside the gate during surge hours, but that's, that's a Band-Aid. That's not a fix. And again, you know, working with the KICA board, working with the stakeholders across the island, working with the club, working with the developer, working with the resort, we all have a piece of this. We're all doing it adjacently and overlapping sometimes. So how do we bring that together? Because comprehensive means comprehensive for me.
Great. Gay?
Well, the comprehensive plan really sets the course for the future of Kiowa and the vision that all of us have for what Kiowa will be going forward. Things are changing. There's a lot more people living here since I moved here full-time six years ago. And it seemed, when we first got here, that there were too many silos. So you had KICA, you had the town. You had a lot of one-off groups, like, say, Preserve Kiowa. You got the developer. You've got the resort. And it never seemed to me, looking back, and even close to today, that we were leveraging all of those groups together for the better future for Kiowa. And decisions weren't being made as a group, as a comprehensive group because there's so much opportunity to leverage all that expertise, all those objectives, and to come out with a better solution for everybody. I'd like to see, and not just the comprehensive plan, which is being worked on by the Planning Commission with some help from an outside consultant. I've heard it hasn't been great, to put it mildly. So we haven't seen the final result of that yet. But beyond just a document, we need a lot more interaction with the stakeholders, with the players. In my career, I was a relationship manager. That was my functional title for 23 years in banking and finance. What does that mean? That means you have to work with a diverse group of people who have different agendas, different objectives, to a common outcome that everybody benefits from. A loan facility, a $200 million loan facility with six banks in the room. So relationship management among all those entities as a lead bank to bring that together, get it done, get it closed, move on to the next thing. I'd like to see a lot more relationship management at Kiowa. And I think our mayor's done a great job of bringing in some of our outside, close-by neighbors to collaborate with our town to mitigate things like traffic that's going to be impacted by things like Seafills and Seabrook and Orange Hill and the gate not being adequate maybe for the future five or 10 years. So the comprehensive plan will set a tone, but the details need to come from a lot of collaboration and willingness to listen to the other side and try to make an informed decision for the better of all of us in our lifestyle here.
Great. So back to you, Gay, and sticking with that theme of growth. What are some concerns or opportunities for Kiowa residents should the town consider a new development agreement with the resort?
What are the opportunities?
Yeah, some concerns, concerns or opportunities.
And or opportunities?
Yes.
Well, speaking to someone who lives pretty close by that East Beach property, today we're driving over here. It's hard to get out of some of the side streets onto Governor's and Kiowa Hall and Parkway. So thinking about that development agreement and working with the resort to mitigate congestion coming out of that onto a main artery on Kiowa is something that needs to be paid close attention to. If it's a planned development type of zoning for that parcel, we have a lot of opportunities as a community to engage with the resort and to come out with an outcome that satisfies both sides. So I hope that's the way it would proceed from a zoning perspective. There's an opportunity for us to possibly have some amenities associated with that development of that parcel as well as their ongoing right now at Nighthairn. As you've seen, there's gonna be some, some fun kind of things that they're putting in over there for us to use. If you're Governor's Club members, you can access those, and maybe, maybe as a renter, I'm not really clear on who all gets to use the Nighthairn amenities. But anyway, as, as we enter into a development agreement, negotiation with a resort, I think it's critical to have good relationship with resort to accept that they've been a great steward of the property that they own on this island, and they've increased all of our lifestyles and our property values. So we don't wanna come in with a punitive attitude towards them. That wouldn't help any of us. So I look forward to working on a development agreement with, I assume, Roger Warren and his legal advisors. I know Roger really well. And I've known him for six years, and my relationship with him, I think, would be of benefit to negotiating and getting a better outcome for the, for the community as a whole.
Great, thanks. Same question on the development agreement?
So I've been pretty smart on development agreements the last couple of years. As we started getting concerned in our community about the Cape development and the potential developments of Beach Walker, I shouldn't say potential, it's gonna happen, but what's it gonna look like when it's all said and done? We really did some deep research on the agreement and all the supporting artifacts and materials that go along with that. So that was very helpful to understand, from our perspective as well, understanding the town's perspective and the developer's perspective of what was allowed, what wasn't allowed, where can we bring concerns to the table? I'm a very big advocate of public participation. Wear me out on public participation if you want to. I've done, I've gone through climate surveys and everything else. I've had some things pointed out to me that I've had to learn from in public participation. So bring me your perspectives and thoughts on that. Like Gay said, the resort has been a good steward. They've brought amenities, and they've brought value to the community, both in our property values and our quality of life. But for the resort and any other developer, a developer agreement, in my mind, is a risk management tool. So they're gonna manage their risks and try to lower their risks through a development agreement. That's a great incentive for the resort. At the same time, that gives the town and the community some leverage to prioritize the things that are important to us and bring those to the table in the development agreement as well, so that we can make sure that there's a agreement going forward that both parties are pleased with. Very similar to how the mediation worked out, Frank. I think I've met with Jordan Phillips and Mark Lamar. I've heard from the mayor and the council. It seems like both parties are satisfied with the way going forward. You know, having a development agreement like that is important as well. I think one of the things we learned from this development agreement is, what's it gonna look like when we look back 10 years from now? You know, we need to write something that withstands the test of time, and we need to stand the test of leadership changes. Elected officials are gonna change. Staff is gonna change. Roger's not gonna be there forever. I met with Roger as well. He's been a great steward, but he's been here for 22 years. Who's gonna be the owner of those properties 10 years from now? We've been through that as well and had to navigate that. So we need to think about all those things in a development agreement. I think overall, it's a good thing. I think it sets a baseline that we can all work from. We just need to do it right.
Can I just follow up on that? The resort also owns that big piece of property where the old inn used to be, the beachfront property. You've seen it behind that circle there at Cougar Point Clubhouse. That's going to be developed in addition to the East Beach Market owned property. When I think about more traffic going down Beach Drive, whatever you call that stretch of road that goes towards the Cougar Point Clubhouse, we've got to front-run the possible nightmare of traffic that could develop there close to the gate, which is already congested. So we're gonna have a lot of work to do, information to review, to make sure that a nightmare of traffic, which is bad enough already, doesn't get created for our community. So I have some concerns about how are we gonna do that with that two-lane road, a lot of traffic going into the conference center of the Cougar Point Clubhouse, headed to the sand castle, headed to the condos are already there, a new hotel. It's a little bit overwhelming when you think about it. What could pop, what could go wrong and what, you know, what an outcome could be. We don't want a bad outcome. It's gonna take a lot of work and negotiation and analysis and some outside expertise to guide us in that part of a development agreement with the resort.
All issues we brought to the table with Beach Walker. Same, same thing. You know, what's traffic gonna be like, what's access gonna be like? And part of the value of the development agreement is, does the developer pay for that infrastructure? But there's a lot of details. Yeah.
Okay. All right. So moving on, Lance, I think you're up next. What could the town do in collaboration with KICA, the resort, and Seabrook to improve public safety? What is your position on the town and Kiowa police force?
Well, I said before, I'm not sold on a police force. I don't think that we have the data yet to show that. I'm interested in what the feasibility study shows. I went to the workshop on that and participated in, by my inputs, and I was glad to see other community members there as well. We're behind a gate. There's a lot of benefits from that. The issues that a normal town would deal with aren't towns that Kiowa deals with, but there are security and safety issues. So we need to bring those to the table and then see how to address them. And incidentally, And incidentally, I think it really needs to be done with the town, Kika and the resort at the table. Frankly, the club too, I think, because they have facilities and a decent amount of property that they need to manage as well and a population that's supported by them. So I think we need to see what the feasibility study says and then take that forward. You know, as far as security and safety, you know, I mentioned one of the things that concerns me is the response time for the sheriff. You know, right now that's our police force. And we discussed what response times and how do we collect data the day of the workshop. Unfortunately, an incident happened that day, so we got a data point. We had a fire in our community a few weeks before that. We've got some data points. We need to get real data on what can and should the sheriff be doing for us? What should Kika be doing? What could the resort be doing? And how do we do it collaboratively? Maybe we have a little command center. I don't know. I'm not talking about investing in anything. Thank you. I've done that. But I, I, I think about connectivity. I mentioned cell towers and cell coverage. And not only day-to-day, because you see police radios, they really aren't using radios anymore. They're using cell phones. You know, all those computers are connected with cellular. You think about disasters, you know, we've continued to dodge the bullet. What if we don't dodge the bullet? How are we positioned both with static connectivity and with agreements to bring in contingency connectivity so that response forces can respond to that? I, I, my last assignment in the military was overseeing communications forces for the National Guard. So all the National Guard that rolls in in disasters, I was responsible for all that. So I've been through a lot of disasters and seen what needs to be done, preserving the security and safety of the community, while at the same time prioritizing resources and assets and being utterly responsive to, to get that done. I, I think about CERT as, as a function of public safety. We've got a CERT program. We, if, if there's nothing else I've learned at Kiowa, everybody in Kiowa is very accomplished and has done something. And they all want to give back, or at least a lot of them do. I shouldn't say all, but many, many do. And, you know, how do we leverage that? And maybe CERT's one of those ways that what is CERT? Emergency Response Team, Community Emergency Response Team. You know, right now there's a, a, a program that, you know, we meet. But I, I, I think that we should have where, you know, the disaster happens and we're cut off. How do we mobilize and have trained people on the island that can take care of the island until the National Guard or somebody else rolls in and helps us? So those are things I think that we can spend a lot of time on and leverage the community and, and address issues that I think we haven't faced yet, but will.
Okay, any questions?
Just repeat it one more time for me?
Sure. What could the town do in collaboration with Kika, the resort and Seabrook to improve public safety? What is your position on the town of Kiowa Police Force?
Right now, we don't have any coverage from seven PM to seven AM from Charleston County Sheriff's Office. That contract that we used to have where we helped pay for the cost of patrol, four patrol cars, some benefits, I think, some contributions to pensions for some of the sheriff's deputies that were assigned to that contract and coverage window is gone. So don't have anything bad happen at night because you might be out of luck. I've met with and talked with Tony Elder, Craig Harris, who's the Director of Security for the town, Carl Ritchie, who I'm supporting in his campaign for sheriff of Charleston County, two consultants who came to that workshop that we went to. And my takeaway from talking to all of those experts is we have a false sense of security with this front gate. And I think it helps a lot, no, no doubt. I feel much safer here. When Jim and I moved here from Atlanta, it was kind of like somebody lifted a cinder block off of your shoulders because you didn't have to worry about what I experienced, my car being stolen right in front of me, neighbors of ours in our very nice neighborhood being carjacked at gunpoint, stuff like that. So get down to Kiowa, oh. You know, that, that feels great. But talking to these experts, their comments to me more or less said, don't assume that what you have today is what you're going to have in the future in terms of your lifestyle and your sense of security on this island. We're growing. You see all the construction going on at Seafills. It brings a lot of people onto Fresh Fields and Kiowa with all this construction. They're not our friends and neighbors. They're workers who are coming here every day, back and forth. I think we can leverage some of what we already have, which is Kika's security, the town's current arrangement with Charleston County Sheriff's Office. I think we'll get a lot better if Carl gets elected because he's worked with Kika. He was on the payroll at Kika before. He knows this place firsthand. So I think we'd benefit from Carl's knowledge. He's a Johns Island guy, born and raised. So I would defer to people like that to tell us what we need going forward. Up to now, we haven't had any very big, serious crime problems. But we've witnessed recently, while you and I were at the workshop, Lance, that a gun was being discharged in the Preserve. Things like that never used to happen. We had bomb threats at Fresh Fields. That never happened until a year or two ago. Nikki Haley's house got swatted. SWAT team shows up in full body gear and scares the hell out of her parents, who were there at the house at the time, twice when she was running for the Republican primary for president. So some things have started to happen that make me a little uneasy, but I think we should all defer to the experts who know, who know this community. We could maybe partner up with Seabrook. When I was in Atlanta, we lived in an unincorporated part of the county. And so the people in Brookhaven, about forty-five thousand population, decided we need our own police force. Because we're not getting the coverage from the Sheriff's Department for DeKalb County. So we incorporated as a town and we started our own police force, much, much better than what we had previously. It was expensive, but the way we paid for it was if you look at your property tax bill, I just got mine today, by the way, you'll see a line item for Charleston County Sheriff's Office funding. For me, I think for Jim and I, I think it was like eleven or twelve hundred dollars for the year. So in Brookhaven, we ledgered that money over to the town of Brookhaven to create our police force. It actually did not net cost us anything. So it's something to think about. If you could partner up with Seabrook and maybe achieve something like that in the future. I don't think we need it right now, but it's something to think about. It takes a lot of time and energy to get to having your own police force. So it would take a couple of years, you know, to evaluate it and and look at it and engage the community and our next-door neighbor at Seabrook. So I'm not saying I would rule it in or rule it out. For now, we need more coverage from the Charleston County Sheriff's Department. And we need twenty-four-hour coverage, not seven AM to seven PM, which is what we currently have, if you can believe that. I don't want to see all of you getting speeding tickets. Maybe get some warnings first. But I think we just need better coverage and work with whoever the sheriff ends up being, hopefully, to listen to us.
Great, thanks. So I'm jumping to another topic. And then I think it's back to you. Is the town doing enough to sustain and protect the marsh? What other steps could it be taking?
Well, the marsh has been impacted by a lot of forces beyond just the town of Kiowa. I was out on a boat on the Kiowa River last week with Colleen Farah and Lee Bundrick from the Conservancy, and we were talking about the marsh, marsh management, pollu-, sources of pollution for the marsh and the river. Saw this about, I think some of you probably think the abandoned sailboat sitting on an oyster mound close to the Kiowa Island Parkway. Lee got up on the thing while we're sitting there in the boat and found that there was fuel, you know, in the tank in the boat, that there was a generator sitting in the boat and there it sits. And he's like, you know, this could leach out into the river or the boat could get dislodged and float down the river, you know. So from the marsh and river perspective, I think we need to mitigate human impact as much as possible. The runoff from golf courses with all the chemicals and pesticides that they have to use to maintain a pretty golf course concerns me. Colleen and Lee were pointing out to me that when you get to this point in the river, the fecal coliform count is so bad that you better not eat that oyster or in that oyster bed. You better not eat the shellfish. Because it's not going to be good for you if you do. So in marsh management, I'd like to see as much conservation as possible in addition to what we've already had happen with some of the marsh properties. I'd like to see homeowners and the developer use sensible best practices in development with marsh management in mind to protect it. Our, our marshes are our best defense against the next hurricane. And they're there to absorb runoff and to filter runoff. And we need them to keep Kiowa beautiful. And if we don't do that, if we neglect that, we're not going to be the same place that we are today.
Marsh management is a huge issue. It is a living thing. It is critical to the ecosystem of the island. And I, I think it was a good start that the Planning Commission in town had a marsh management working group a few weeks ago. I was glad to see Shannon there because, and, and Ryan and Matt, who did presentations, Lee was there, presented as well. And there was great participation. I, I think this is something that the public really needs to prioritize and the town needs to prioritize in partnership with Kika. I live on Inlet One, so I see one end of it every day. And, and thanks to Kika, by the way, erosion is one problem in Kika sandbagging the banks. So that's a big help. We see people down walking around in the marsh. I don't know why they do that because it's like quicksand, but, but they do it. The marsh is so vital to the food chain, to, like, like Gay said, the, the, the quality of our water. I, I, I think that we need to be very clear about what ordinances we put in place that affect marsh survivability and marsh resiliency and marsh management. One thing that neighboring communities have is a net neutral ordinance about development. And basically that means that if you're developing, you can't push your water off onto somebody else and then create stormwater problems or become marsh problems. That's one key thing that I think we need to address more urgently as a community, as a town, as a Kika, to, to make sure that we're doing that. We should do it before we do the development agreement with the resort as well, so that, you know, that's very transparent and a known thing going forward. The perme-, the non-, the permeable surfaces, I always get that wrong. The permeable surfaces initiative, I think, is great. Right now it's going to be multifamily and, and larger development. But there's pockets of initiative going on on the island right now to voluntarily convert your driveways from asphalt to the permeable surfaces. That will help the filtration of the stormwater, which helps the community, which helps the marshes, which helps everything. So I, I think that's a wonderful initiative. I, I think we need to expand that. And I think we should explore incentives. So that if, you know, like my driveway, I think it's going to cost about fifteen thousand dollars to do. We've been looking at doing it in our community, which is a pull that I'm willing to buy, frankly, for the aesthetics and the, the benefit to the community and to our property. But I, I think we should consider incentives so that people voluntarily look at doing that. Can't pay for the whole thing. But maybe there's a, a, a sweet spot where people will say, you know what, I was thinking about doing it. The town's helping out. You know, it's, it's spirit of cooperation. Let's, let's go do that. So I, I think those are some things that we need to be taking a look at also. But making sure that we have the healthy marshes and that they are managed to point to not impacting our properties and our quality of life and the environment overall is critical.
Just to touch base, we're about forty-five minutes in. I've got three more questions. You guys are doing great in terms of your timing and everything. The next question for you, Lance, what are your thoughts regarding Toki's involvement in additional amenities for Kiowa, such as additional fitness facilities or performing arts center?
So I, I think, I sat in a workshop about a month ago that the town had. And it was led by an attorney from the Municipalities Association about what's our form of government, what are the authorities of our government? And it was hugely educational. It, it was basically a, a close notes down your throat of what is the town's role and responsibilities? And then you were discussing what Kika's rolled in and, and the resort and other things. Is it the role of the town to provide those? I, I think that's a question we should discuss. I, I know the mayor has a vision for town, town complex to revamp that and, and maybe provide more amenities with that, maybe a, a dog park, not at the expense of the existing dog area on the beach. But in addition to incorporating performing arts aspect to that would help the Arts Council and the community that enjoys those performances a lot. I, I, I think that's going to be an interesting project to work on and, and be part of. Should I get elected? You know, probably. But I think that's a nice vision that he's got, you know, he shared with me. He's already met with people on trying to pull together ideas. So that is a role the town can play. I, I, I think we need to be mindful though of where we're using taxpayer dollars. Are we using those for the right thing? You know, there's, there's questions of the accommodation tax and, and other things like that. You know, how and when should those be used? Those are a great benefit for the town to have access to those kinds of resources. Prioritizing community participation and, and what the community wants and, and mindful decisions on that, I think, will help us get to where we want to be.
I'm meeting with some of the people in the town Arts Council Thursday just to get to know them and hear what they have to say, talk to the feasibility study that was done regarding a facility for the future. So I'll wait, I'm curious to hear what they have to say because I haven't really seen any of that feasibility study detail. It seems to me that there might be an opportunity to again bring some of the players together, Seabrook, Kiowa, Kaseek, the town of Kiowa Island, Kika, all together to possibly look at funding a performing arts center. Thinking outside the box, not just music programs or recitals or dance programs, I thought, hey, wouldn't it be nice if we had a movie theater down here? So I'll have to drive all the way over to the Terrace Theater. I don't know if that's something that would be incorporated into a performing arts center. But I think there's enough growth here that it's worth considering, cost-benefit type of point of view. The town. I don't, I, I had lobbied in the past for the prior mayor, Labriola, about a community garden. Because I thought, okay, it's kind of like they have down at Seapines, if any of you have been to Seapines. I think Seabrook may have something like that too. I thought, well, that might be an interesting thing to promote the community and give some of us who'd like to have a garden space protected from deer and the ARB to take advantage of. So I'm still interested in that. Dog park, I don't know. That's a hot topic. I have a dog, by the way. There, the town doesn't own property other than where the town hall sits. And I think it's almost fifteen acres, Brad, maybe? Is that right? About fifteen acres? A lot of it is land. There's that great gorgeous Taj Mahal sitting there that I refer to, town hall, Taj Mahal. Maybe we could make better use of some of the space in there. I don't know. But I think it would be a good thing to explore for the community. I think using subcontracting with the resort to use the West Beach Conference Center is fine. But it may not be adequate in the future when our population is increasing. We have people that come to those events from Seabrook and Johns Island. And maybe it's time to have our own space that we have a little bit more control over. But I think we should work with the broader community to help us with that. I don't think we need to do it ourselves.
Great. So, Gay, the town was established thirty-five years ago and has consistently grown in size and reach. What do you see as the optimal scope of the town services and regulations? Is there a limit? How can the town, the ARB and Kika eliminate any overlapping governance and simplify the system?
This is such a complicated structure here. With Kika being such a big community association with so much responsibility behind the gate. Uh then we have the town um authorities for I focus mainly on development uh in terms of how much impact the town has on our day, our lifestyle here. And I I think there's still a lot of room for Kika and the town to work together for all of us and some of the task forces, like the Joint A R B Task Force that you've been involved in, Kevin. Uh between Kika and the town make a lot of sense. I'd like to see more of that. Um because I think it gives us all a better outcome, whatever the project is. Uh so I'd like to see the A R B transition away from the developer. I know um that's a difficult thing to accomplish for a lot of reasons. I'd like to see repair and replace work um at the Kika level. Uh not having to go through what we currently go through to change the color of the trench on our house or paint the house or make some landscaping decisions, make life easier for all of us. Um and ultimately, maybe the whole of the A R B ends up with Kika, um which makes sense. Um but it needs to be done thoughtfully and slowly um so that we don't end up drinking from a fire hose um in that transition. So those are the things I think we should work together on. Continue with the joint task forces. I think that's great. Um and we do, if we do more of that, we'll have better outcomes.
Great. Will I read it again as long as?
It it's all about the community. We're all serving the same community. Um and it's our responsibility, whether we're elected to Kika or to the town to figure out how to do it together. It it is complex, but I've had two assignments at the Pentagon, so that's complex, too. And I worked for AT&amp;T. Talk about complex, the phone company. You you think what it's like to call in? Imagine trying to navigate it internally as well. So complexity is something I'm really good at. Um my performance reports over the years talk about team building and collaboration. Those are the key things that I'm really good at. I had a friend call the other day. He says, you're the best team builder I've ever met. Um and I was pleased to hear that because I I'm proud of that. Um but we need to um, I think, set up a a more structured framework of how we're serving our community together. More so, frankly, one one thing I'm gonna ask you and the mayor to consider is maybe we need quarterly workshops with Kika and the town. And we discuss alignment and our parallel or overlapping efforts of how we serve the community together. And we bring our authorities and our responsibilities to the table in in that forum to make sure that we're properly aligned. We're all paying assessments. We're all paying taxes. It's our job to make, as elected officials, to make sure that that money is being spent wisely and those resources are being used effectively. So I I go back to, it's the same community. We're all serving it. There's territory outside the gate. There's territory inside the gate. And there's the resort. We probably need to pull the resort in on it also, because they're a major stakeholder as well. I'm all for pulling the glove in. Let's let's bring Tom in and, you know, his team, because there are responsibilities that they bring as well with the amenities they provide to to serve the community. So i- it should be all transparent, it should be all on the table. Um I'm very experienced at complicated um things. I negotiate a partnership between AT&amp;T and Verizon, if you believe that. Um so I I feel like I'm up to Kika and the town, you know, getting those two cats and dogs to work together. And and that partnership, by the way, I pulled in thirty of the top technology companies across the planet to come together into a consortium to develop the next generation cellular solutions. So I'm very good at negotiating, very good at people skills, very good at team building, very good at getting things done. So um I'm happy to bring that to the town.
All right, so I'm gonna ask you just the last question, that up wrap-up question, but you kind of halfway answered it there, but uh it was what unique experi- uh so maybe you just build on it. Uh what unique expertise, experiences and accomplishments you think that you bring that will help you be a successful council member?
I it it starts with the community, like I said before. Um being intuitive to the community, understanding the needs of the community. Um delivering on what the town owes the community. Um I'm a great listener. And and if I'm wrong, I'll admit it. Um and I will get on the on the wagon for what the right answer is, if it's best for the community. Um I take coaching. I've taken a lot of coaching. I think we all have. If we haven't, then uh we need to because uh we all make mistakes and missteps. Um but I I listen. Um I've shared to the whole Kiowa community my email address and my phone number. Call me. Uh we had great engagement at my drop-in sessions. I appreciate what everybody brought and discussed with me there. Um people are pulling me aside um a- as I'm out and about and discussing things. Bring it on. I love it. Um I it 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 gives me energy, and it's not about me, but it gives me energy to hear from you and and to work with you and the community on getting things done. Um I'm used to going twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. I had two careers where I was on call all the time. Um Missy needs me out of the house. That's one self-serving thing that I'll mention. Um and needs me to have something to sink my teeth into, but i- i- and that's, you know, kind of in jazz, but it's true. But it it it's um, I I talk about my team building and collaboration skills. One of the things that my bosses actually have told me over the years that they've learned from me is putting the right person in the right role. Um I seem to be really good at that, you know, finding the right talent and talent management. And and so working with the mayor, the town staff doesn't work for me, but working with the mayor on uh town issues and how the town staff is is managed. Um there's a lot of committees and boards on um under the town's governments. Um and so, you know, helping identify those people who have some gas in the tank still that have great talent, that want to come and be part of the town. Um we, I I I don't think we need a more complex town governance, but there are prior some gaps and some things. You know, I mentioned CERT as one of them. I'm glad you asked me to explain what that was. Um you, making sure that um uh we've got great quality people involved in things. Um I I think at the end of the day, and this is the life I've had to live because of the roles I've had, accountability is important. Um transparency, um in both my government role and my AT&amp;T role, I have very strict ethics requirements and disclosures. There's no secrets with me. I'm happy to do and share whatever needs to be, except for probably my ten forty. I don't think this job requires that. But thank you.
Gay, bring us home.
Bring us home. Um I've been here full-time for six years, and I've gotten to know a lot of you, if not everybody in this room over this si- uh over those six years and enjoyed getting to hear all the different opinions and the expertise. The um community is pretty unique um in its talent base and welcoming. All of us here are looking to make new connections, new friends. Uh enjoy our life here on Kiowa and and keep it the special place that it is. In my work life, I was that relationship manager role, also a problem solver. In my job responsibilities, Jim will uh back me up on this. I'm a problem solver at home. I'm the one in the family who steps in to help everybody in my family. Um and I enjoy that. Uh and I want to keep doing that. It's important to me to feel like this is home, and the only way I can feel that way is to be involved with all of you and to listen to various opinions, different points of view, different issues. I promise I'll listen with an open mind, take it all in, consult with the experts uh before I make any decision uh on my own as a town council member. I think it's a great place. I feel privileged to live here and privileged to know all these wonderful people I've met in six years that I've made this my home to the exclusion of my former friends who are mad at me because I don't go back to Atlanta anymore. I've I've got a full life here. What do you mean? You know, how could you, how could you do that? But I do have a full life here, and I think my background, my personality, my involvement in the community my ability to make the time available for this job, because it is a big time commitment uh are things that I'm happy to do. I'm waiting to do it for you. And I appreciate uh your trust and I'm always available. You can call me, email me, stop me on the street anytime we want. I'd like to hear what you have to say. And so I appreciate your support, if I can earn your vote, and no matter what the outcome, I think either of us would be a great addition to the town council. And we both have a real obvious passion for Kiowa and for the future of Kiowa. So thank you so much for letting me explain myself.
Thank you to you both for participating. Appreciate it.